Walking, you know, concrete, asphalt. Patio.
Patio.
Correct.
Is this the total cost or?
No, this is just our share.
Okay.
The city's portion. I wish I could remember Janus, what percent was it? Was it ten percent or twenty?
Total amount probably was twenty, but I don't think ours is twenty. Of course, putting in some.
Yeah.
Maybe it's like a one point two million.
Yeah.
So this is a project that's been in planning for quite some time.
Oh yeah, we've been waiting on Cannelton Sewer. That's what's delayed the whole River Road project is their sewer runs under that.
Yeah.
So now that they've got their own plant going, or they will, that can be removed, filled in, or whatever, they can actually put a road on top of, because it runs under it.
Okay.
You don't put a new road on top of a sewer that's collapsing under it. It's just dumb. So we're gonna fix that. And then we can actually complete that road and actually make it accessible with the port with trucking, you know, semis, whatever can actually access. Probably six, six, five, they're going through residential neighborhoods. But the walking trail is nice to see it extend up. It's part of the whole master plan. You know, discussed the other day that, you know, they love to see Cannelton attach this and it'd be up to Cannelton if they want to attach it. And the opportunity is there for them now to bridge the communities with walking trails. So, but this is. The road. Yeah, yeah. And have like decorative lighting, all that. So. It's gotta be lit because it's a road. So why not just lighting the light trails and that sort of thing. It's kind of. But it's estimated at the Eda Reserve for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. This is basically the city's share of that. Six hundred and something? Yeah.
So this is a river system to bring in water?
Yeah, something like that.
You're welcome. Any questions? There are no questions. Do I entertain your motion to approve? Motion by Larry or second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? If there are none, we'll call for a vote. Laws and favors, signature, five and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nick, item of the new business, item C. DFW Gerald Davis provides a letter. We have Gerald Davis here with the DFW. He does have a letter here that he's presenting to you. I think he had talked at the last meeting and said he was gonna prepare a letter. So Gerald, if you want to come up and ask if they have any questions for you, if you have any questions for them or comments you want to make, that'd be great. By the way, just gonna give you a plug. They have good food there. You can stop and eat on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Check out their Facebook page. We had lasagna last Friday. It was homemade, outstanding. So.
So most of all, I'll send an extended invitation to everybody. Please come on by if you want to do anything, make some extra firefighters and we'll fill the village up full and everybody, full of food and everything. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. You've got my letter here and what it is, the thing, the DFW, you want to worry about putting us in the, put it next to your thing, but. We just appreciate it. We're asking for donations and I'm not gonna give out any kind of figure, number of figures and everything. Just request anything at the. City, you can help out a little bit and everything, give us a small donation, everything, whatever, if it's possible. We've got some repairs that we really have hit us pretty good, but we're surviving. We're trying to get some of our events back going again. It's a little bit slower, but we're just trying to approve the, approve the DFW thing. And most of all, I think the main thing is it's for our veterans. There's been a new knock on wood. Some members started to come in and some members have come back and everything. And it is, it's good to talk to some of the members that's not even here in Tull City anymore and they've helped us out a little bit and everything too. And I'll just kind of make it short, shorten everything. If the city can help us a little bit and everything, we really appreciate it. And that's really, really all I've got and everything. We have quite a few events that we do for the community and for the public and everything. We have all kinds of little things and we do things for, out of the four other funeral details and different things and even go to nursing home and everything. And support our veterans and everything. And Mayor and Council, that's really all I've got. I'll just leave it right there.
Council, do you have any questions for Gerald, boys up here?
Quick question. Are you applying for ARP?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to item D, school buses. Phil, if you had a question, I'll throw you, throw you under the.
Yeah.
I don't say throw you under the bus.
Throw you under the bus.
But if you would like to get some comments and some concerns, I've had some discussions too about it. So I'll let, I'll let you kind of.
Yeah, I can start it. So basically, I've just had some concerns from citizens who live in our community that. A private school bus owner, school buses and. School corporation. Get you to own school buses.
Sure.
Hire your own drivers. They were parking them right in front of a homeowner's house. And the first question was the deal. They just asked to move it. Can you move it somewhere? I guess the school bus owner is not resident of Tull City. Has a room for the school bus. Has its house that he first used to spot in Tull City because it's right by William Todd Wintry. The spot is also by one of the parks, especially the baseball field. Or used to be a baseball field. field. Kids playing by my, friends being by my 100 bus, cars driving by. So, you know, I've looked at the ordinance several times. Um, yeah, I gave the gems some.
Phil, 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 reach out to me because I know we had touched on this at a meeting before, and I was mistaken at the prior meeting. I didn't think we had an ordinance that would address this. Now, we've got an ordinance that's not the perfect fit, I would say necessarily for this, but they're pretty close, that defines large vehicles. And I haven't had a chance to talk with chief about this yet, and I was just searching on my phone to see if I could find the ordinance number. And unfortunately, I don't have it on that email, but I've got it back in my office. We do have an ordinance about large vehicles, large vehicles particularly parked in residential neighborhoods. There's a mechanism within this ordinance for a group of, I believe it's three homeowners within 500 feet to submit a complaint. And when they do, I believe the ordinance then affords our police department the ability to cite these, the person, the offender parking a large vehicle in an appropriate place. I need to look a little more into that and need to talk with chief a little more about it. Chief, I don't know if you know the ordinance I'm talking about or not.
I do. I, I was with you on, on it originally. I will tell you that we, we checked into that because this has been an ongoing thing. We were told that large vehicles are semis, vehicles designed to carry cargo, not passengers. You would think by structure, I would agree that, you know, it's a, there's visibility issues with a school bus. So I'm certainly all about trying to find a way to not have them parked on the street. But I know when we researched this before, we were going, a school bus is not in the same classification as a large vehicle.
Yeah, the ordinance I'm talking about does make a reference to buses, but it doesn't say school buses, so it's, it is kind of a gray area. My suggestion on this issue right now is let me talk with chief a little bit about it, see where we think that might get us in terms of enforcement ability now. I believe the consensus that I've heard thus far on this issue is that this council would like for this practice to stop. And so if we don't think we've got what we need in the ordinance now, then I think I could come back to the council with some suggestions on how we might tweak that ordinance. Because I believe from the facts that have been gathered so far, the person that's parking these school buses there, at best is taking advantage of a loophole and at worst is violating an ordinance already. Because I'm, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, the neighborhood I grew up in. There are kids on bikes, there are kids in the park, these school buses parked where they're at. Maybe not the buses in and of themselves are a danger, but it does make it much more difficult and frankly, for the homeowners that are adjacent to this, probably what they'd consider an eyesore. So if that's satisfactory to the council, I'll discuss it with chief and get back to you with what I think we can do or, or what we might need to do.
I think there's one or maybe two other places to, for it.
Yeah, I know that the, the ordinance that I'm talking about right now specifically references residential. Because one of my first thoughts is, well, gosh, we don't want a situation where the school themselves with the buses they own that are parked on site would be in violation. I think that would probably be the distinction for the school. I haven't checked, but I don't think the school is, is zoned residential. And the ordinance I'm talking about makes reference to the ability to have large vehicles, but that you have to keep them on your property, they have to be in an enclosed building. I, I, I need to dig a little more on it.
Well, I will, made a note here on my agenda to add that to the agenda for October. Is that okay?
Oh, I'll absolutely have some issues sorted out on that. Yeah.
Can you send us?
I will. I, I was also kicking myself for not sending the ordinance out to the whole council, but I will.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Okay.
Very good, thanks for all the work.
I still got it called up on my computer, I just couldn't access it remotely.
Yeah, we were doing that late Friday, I think.
I appreciate everything you're all doing to work on that. All right, item E, ARP request, Larry Clement. Larry's got some requests on that. We do have a request that was made to the ARP committee. It wasn't favorable, but it's still a request and I'd said regardless of favorable or non- favorable, we'd bring him to the council. So I'm gonna let Larry kind of, and he made the request, I'm gonna let Larry kind of have the floor. So Larry, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Excuse me. I made a request to the ARP committee to use some of the ARP funds to provide one-time stipends to all city employees for the essential services that they provided. Requesting $1,000 for full-time employees and $500 for part-time employees. Since I made that request, I've done some additional research and I really don't want to submit that request tonight. What I would like to do is to discuss some things about that request, but to postpone any formal requests until a later date. And I would also though, like to take this opportunity and I think mayor, proper, to talk about the ARP advisory committee. If that's appropriate.
Sure.
The ARP advisory committee is not a requirement of the American Rescue Program Funds. It is an advisory committee. The mayor requested the establishment of the advisory committee and the council did adopt an ordinance. April the 4th of 2022, we adopted ordinance 1185, which established the procedures for the ARP committee and requiring all applications to go through the committee. Also, in establishing the advisory committee, Mayor Cale issued a call for volunteer citizens to serve on the committee and I believe he had four responses.
Three.
Three?
I put all three that are under submission. It was Kelly Harding, Brad Franzman, and Melinda Lee. The only three that's, I was going to take two initially, but since three applied, I thought just put all three, I'd rather than call one person out, wouldn't be right. So only three people were interested for the public.
So initially you had a committee of nine, of eight people, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Which consisted of the mayor, clerk treasurer, two city council members, representative from the county council, and then three citizens, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then sometime, it's my understanding that initially you had difficulty getting a quorum together to meet and at some time during the process, you reorganized and reduced that advisory committee down to five people.
Correct.
I'm not sure exact timing on that, but requiring a quorum of three.
Correct.
Where previously you had to have a quorum of five, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I've gone to a number of that, let me back up just a little bit then. So the current advisory committee consists of Connie, the mayor, John Little, representing the city council, Danny Bowlen representing the county council, and one citizen member, Kelly Harding. That's the composition of the current committee, correct? Okay. I've attempted to attend many of the meetings and not all of them, but many of them. And many of the meetings I have attended, including the meeting on August the 24th, only had three members present. And I know for a fact, at least, two of the other meetings I attended only had three members present, the mayor, Connie, and Kelly Harding. And I, I just have a hard time accepting a committee of three people, two of whom are the city, the mayor and Connie. So in effect, we've got one citizen on that committee making decisions. And I just have a hard time accepting it as truly an advisory committee. And I think mayor, that your goal initially was admirable in establishing advisory committee, although it's not required. And I just have concerns about the actual functioning of that committee. I do want to mention that currently, the council has allocated $150,000 for nonprofits and small businesses to apply. There are some restrictions to the type of nonprofits that can apply. I know one category is 501(c)(3) and I think there's another category.
501(c)(6), either 18 or 19, something like that.
I can't recall the number. And a small business is defined as fewer than 500 employees.
Correct.
I don't know if the council members have downloaded the application that is actually being accepted currently. It was a five-page application that's being used. I didn't make copies of all these, but you can get them from the clerk treasurer's office or go onto the website and download it. But applications are currently being accepted and they're due on September the 14th. I have a lot of concerns about the ARP committee and the current process of requiring city applications, such as from the park and recreation department or police department or whatever department, going through the ARP committee. It's probably too late in my estimation to disband the committee, but can't we find two people willing to attend the meetings and participate so that they're more than, there's, I mean, it's just, it's not functioning as it was intended to function there. So, I mean, that, that's your call.
Well, I tell you what I'll do. I will reach out to the other two members that are on there and encourage, I know Danny had issued an apology saying he's sorry, he's kind of gotten a loop on it, and I respect that. He's had some things come up and John's work is kind of limiting, but what I'll do is I'll reach out to both of those gentlemen and encourage their attendance, either virtual or in person. John can participate virtual if he has to. Or maybe I'll see if the different meeting date works to accommodate more so we can get everybody there.
Or appoint different people.
You could. I mean, let me reach out to them first. I think rather than just say, you're off, would be the wrong thing to do. I think reaching out to them first would, you know, I'll do that.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about my rationale for asking for some of these funds to be used for our city employees. Again, I'm not making a formal request tonight. I want to clarify that nobody put me up to this. It was my idea. I'm the one that presented the request to the ARP committee and I'm hoping that eventually the council will adopt this plan or a plan. The American Rescue Plan Act passed Congress and was signed into law by President Joe Biden in March of 2021. For the city, we adopted an ordinance 1175 on May the 3rd, 2021, accepting these federal funds. One of the many allowable uses is to pay city essential workers a premium pay which cannot exceed $13 an hour and $25,000 a year. So if we decided to do it, we cannot pay a city employee premium pay exceeding $13 an hour or $25,000 a year. That's in addition to what their current salary is, okay? What I've asked for amounts to about 50 cents an hour and a thousand dollars, okay? Just per comparison. Now, I'd like to review what the ARP committee and the council has approved to date ARP funds. You set aside $150,000 for nonprofit and small businesses. You set aside $16,500 for consulting services for Baker Tilly. You set aside appropriate, I use the word appropriate because it's been appropriated, $10,000 for update of the city website, $25,000 for JFK pool expenses, $15,000 for city hall downstairs bathrooms, ADA improvements, $30,000 for Wendy Creek, $15,000 initially for Pagromon Park, $25,000 for Joe Schaefer Park, $10,000 for the dog park, $20,000 for the pickleball court, $5,000 for restroom improvements and parks department, $5,000 for the beautification committee, $150,000 for wastewater extensions, that's the new subdivision being worked on with redevelopment commission at the hospital, $50,000 for computer equipment, $120,000 for a trash truck, $20,000 for a penetrating radar unit for the water department, and then additionally, another $44,186 for the basketball courts at Iron Park and additional $26,000 for the pickleball court. So if I've added correctly, it's been about $690,500 appropriated ARP funds.
How much was that again, that total?
$690,000.
And which leaves a balance of $940,627, plus I believe there's been some accrued interest. So, you know, I, I find there are two things, and by the way, I've supported each one of these projects. I think they're good projects, I think it's a good use of money. But I just thought I'd point out what we spent money on. Third, in my mind, there are two things in common with all these requests. One, is they're all federal funds. And two, none of them could be implemented without city employees. I find those two things to be in common on all these requests. And I think we should use, I projected $107,000 to pay our city workers for essential services that they provide. Again, I'm not formally submitting this request tonight. I'd like to distribute a couple of things for you to think about. I think I've got enough copies. This was a, what's coming down is a listing of positions, employee positions. This was emailed to me in June, June the 24th, so I, I know the numbers could, could have changed since that period of time, but this, this gives you a breakdown of what I asked for over full-time, part-time, and volunteers. By volunteers, we've listed the police reserves and the fire department. Total of 127 individuals included in this sheet. Since I made my initial request, and I, I mentioned earlier, what I had proposed, the $107,000 was a figure that I proposed based on a $1,000 stipend and a $500 stipend to full-time or part-time employees and volunteers. In preparing for this meeting, I, I did a little bit of research and I came across a state board of accounts, November 23rd, 2021, a state examiner directive, 2021-3, regarding premium pay under the American Rescue Plan Act. I've not had time to talk with Connie's office to see if this is currently in effect or newer issuance by the state board of accounts. But in reviewing this directive, they seem to indicate that what I was proposing as far as one-time bonuses or stipends, that that wasn't allowable and you had to do premium pay by paying an hourly pay, again, up to $13 an hour and not exceeding $25,000 annually. They also indicated here that what eligible workers are, and they indicate what essential work is, they also indicate that it can be paid retroactively. So that's why I want to defer any formal requests until I have an opportunity to meet with Connie and the mayor. I'd be happy to meet with you also and discuss this and then get some guidance from Baker Tilly as to what I can legitimately request, okay? That's why I'm deferring action tonight. I still would like to make a request. I think our employees are worth the investment. It's obviously a legal thing, otherwise the state board of accounts wouldn't have issued a letter with guidance on it. And I think it's an investment in our employees at a time when inflation is hitting all of us. And as I stated earlier, all of these great projects that we've talked about would be, would be unable to do without these folks. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, council, do you have any question?
Will, will we have to evaluate every position to make sure that they were doing essential work as compared to, do we have to like prove every single worker was doing this or can we just blank it?
I think, I think the, the definition that the state board of accounts gives under essential work is enough clarification. Again, unless, and that's one of the reasons to meet with Baker Tilly and ask them for guidance on this thing. I'm not sure, I mean, what I had initially proposed was paying the reserves and the volunteer farm also. I'm not sure that's permitted, but I'm not sure, that's a question I'd like to ask Baker Tilly if there's a way that we can structure this so that those folks got paid also.
Larry, would this involve people who are working on a specific date? What about individuals who might have been hired after that date or something?
Gary, I, I would, what I had thought about initially was to pay a stipend like next year, sometime next year. But according to this, the state board of accounts, this allows you to go retroactively. So if we can go retroactively and do it, that would be my preference. And maybe that's not possible. I mean, maybe, maybe for instance, I'm just, just for instance here, maybe we would increase a worker's pay by 50 cents an hour during the year 2023. I don't know. Those are, those are questions that in order to make a firm proposal, needs to be hashed out with somebody that can, you know, I, and, and I haven't had the time to, to do that. So, but if you guys are dead set against paying our employees something, that's it.
Call for decorum.
Call me?
Decorum, please. I'm very dedicated to this city and that's offensive to me.
Okay. All right. Anything else regarding that? Okay. So under mayor's report, I just kind of have one thing this weekend, September the 10th is dragging main, so make sure you come out. We got run from the cops on September 10th also. They want me to dress up as a police officer, they can run. I don't know about that, you know? We'll see if I lose a bet, right? Maybe that's what it's going to be. But, so we have two great things going on this weekend, so if you get a chance, make sure you participate in those. I think I come out and just watch, you don't have to run. You can help, they'll take volunteers. So check those things out. There's nothing else? Janice?
Sorry. And you can do a line if you have it. Yeah, we're, we're gonna post a link on our Facebook page. If, if you, if you have it, you need more time to think about it.
All right. So anything else regarding the motion to adjourn? Motion by Larry or second? Second by Julie, always in favor, signify by a same eye. opposed.